Good morning. I'd like to call to order the Community Redevelopment Agency's special meeting this Saturday, May tenth, two thousand and fourteen. If we'd all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
By Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk?
Yes, ma'am. Chairwoman Eloise Taylor.
Here.
Vice Chair Bill Colombo.
Here.
Board Member Steve O'Neill.
Here.
Board Member Nancy Britton.
(cough) Here.
Board Member Terrence Rowe.
Here.
City Attorney Joseph Pulbeck, please let the record show he is absent, and City Manager Tom O'Neill.
Here.
Okay. Any announcements, Mr. O'Neill?
No, I have none at this time.
Any comments from the public? Comments from the Board?
I think Kristen had a comment.
Yes, sir.
Is this the?
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Kristen Tonkin, I'm on the verge of Hilltop Drive.
Do me a favor and please speak in the microphone so we can all hear you, especially me.
I don't think so.
Kristen Tonkin, one zero two two zero, Hilltop Drive, Newport Richie. I'm here today because I'm on the Restore Act Committee in the county, and from what Walter told me that this special meeting is about is for you all to figure out if you want to hire a grant writer to come before the committee. And really, you don't really have to spend the extra money because anybody can just go up freely and talk about your idea. And since you already came before us and I suggested that you add the boat ramp into it, Tom, I'm directing this at you because I mentioned that to you, and just for the waterfront park, even maybe the waterfront park should also have boat ramp access. And Commissioner Mariano at that time said it's possible that we could also get some money for dredging there. And that's what the Restore Act is really for. It's for the sustainability of the whole community and, you know, restoring the function of the waterfront. Anybody have any questions? Nope? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Before us today is the proposal for Fred Fox Enterprises for his assistance with regard to the proposals that we want to bring before the Restore Act Commission for the city of Port Ritchie. Mr. O'Neill?
Yes, this is in your packet today for your consideration. I have included on the table today the DIAS resume information that was sent to us by Mr. Fox. I also wanted to point out that he previously has been selected by the city and used on prior occasions to assist in grant writing. The proposal is somewhat different from most consulting agreements that are entered into in that he works on a finder's fee basis, a commission, if you will. It states that three percent of the first five hundred thousand dollars awarded to the city would go to Mr. Fox as his consulting fee, two percent of the second five hundred thousand dollars, and one percent of any amount awarded over one million dollars. Those agreements are very similar to what he worked with in the past with the city of Port Ritchie on some grant applications, some of which were successful and some of which were not. His resume information is included. He's worked for a number of cities, including currently working for the city of Zephyr Hills and the city of Dade City and in a lot of other smaller communities in Florida. So with that, it's up for your consideration. And any other questions, I'll be glad to try and help answer.
So we've got this proposal, and let's open it for discussion before we go to a motion. Anyone want to speak to this issue?
Well, Mayor, I'd like to announce that Curtis Franklin is here. He is from the county. I had talked to him last week because I was still not sure of what we were doing or where we were heading. I knew this had to do with BP, but I didn't understand that we were going through the county, and so this clarified things for me. And I thought he was a really good sport because he offered to come here this morning and address us if we will hear him, kind of clear up some issues, give us direction and more information, which I think we really sorely need before we make a decision on this.
Mr. Franklin?
Ma'am.
We appreciate your presence here this morning, and maybe you can assist us with the general overview of the Restore Act program.
Okay. The Restore Act is a piece of legislation that was put into effect in two thousand and twelve, two years approximately after the Deepwater Horizon spill. What it basically said is eighty percent of the money that normally goes to the oil spill trust fund is now going to go to the directly affected states and try to repair environmental and economic damage that has happened. And so it's a very unique piece of legislation. It's the first time that's going on. The trial to determine the amount of money that's going to go there, based on the Clean Water Act violations, is currently ongoing in New Orleans, and the trial reconvenes January twentieth of two thousand and fifteen. So what I'm trying to tell you with that statement is you guys have some time, okay? This is, the amount of money that's going to be awarded is still not determined, and it won't be determined until probably sometime around the middle of February of next year, okay? So what's going on with the, also is that the Treasury rules are not out. What you would be doing is you would basically be paying for this consultant at this time to submit your project and your project ideas to the state. Well, if you go to the FDP website, there's an application form, and it's very easy to fill out. You can submit your project ideas. You fill in the blanks or whatever the case may be, and I'm willing to help out with the county. I've been working with Jocelyn, and I've been working with Tom on the project already. And I'm willing to work out and help you guys submit those projects. When you submit it to the state, all right, and you get into that FDP database, you're going to be eligible for POT two, which is the federal funding, and POT three, which is the state funding. When you come in front of the Restore Act Council, that Council's helping to determine what to do, they're ranking all the projects, but it's going to basically be a driver for what we're going to do with the POT one money, which is the money that's going to come directly to the county, all right? So I'm trying to round up all the projects, and that's one of the reasons I approached the city of Port Ritchie. I'm trying to round up all the projects in the county that might be out there that might be eligible for Restore. This is a great project that you guys have, all right, and I think it's very, very applicable. I'm willing to help out and do everything that I can to help you guys get that submitted for POT two and POT three consideration, and whatever you guys need. I mean, it's not that overly difficult. You guys, it's not, this is not a formal grant that you guys are going to be applying for. All you're doing right now, because there is no rules, all you would be doing right now is you'd be submitting an application form to the state to go into their data bank. By the way, that data bank has about eight hundred projects, I think it is, worth about fifteen billion dollars in it. So kind of, you know, I don't want to get your hopes up saying that, hey, you submit, you're in, okay? You're going to get your dredge and the money will be coming tomorrow. That's not the case. There are competition. There's some serious competition out there. But the state of Florida is collecting all the projects, and they're going to sort through them. Are there any questions?
So the ability of the city to meet the criteria and score well is significant in putting us in a more competitive position.
Yeah, I think your projects would score very well on the committee. I mean, I can't say where you guys would fall out. I've got, I've currently got twenty-five projects that we've gone through and graded based on the federal criteria, and we've had another dozen projects or so that we're grading on POT one. So you've got thirty-seven other projects out there, and the county has submitted right now about four hundred million dollars worth of projects, okay? So I can't say where I is, but looking at the project overview and everything else, I would expect that this project would score very, very well, especially on the POT one category. But I, you know, I got to see the presentation in order to kind of get an idea.
Well, that's exactly what I'm saying, is that the presentation and putting together the information is going to be significant in enhancing our ability to score well.
Yes.
And how much, what is your estimate of the amount of money that will be available to the county or?
The direct funds.
For the number of projects out there?
The direct funds, the way the distribution works and the way the formula that the Gulf Coast Consortium has agreed to, which is the twenty-three counties that have come together and they've agreed on a distribution percentage based on where you're located, basically, on the coast. The way that works out, the county is going to get nine hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars for every billion dollars that's awarded against BP. The fine amounts are going to be anywhere from five billion to seventeen point six billion dollars. That's going to go against the BP. I can't tell you what the, unfortunately, I can't tell you what the judge is going to award, so I can't tell you the exact amount of money. But right now, Transocean has deposited one, or has been settled out for one billion dollars. So the county right now is guaranteed to get nine hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars. That's the best that I can tell you with the money. But anywhere from five, I'm guessing anywhere from five million to fifteen million is where we're going to be.
Anyone else have any questions with Mr. Franklin?
Yeah, you had summarized the group of projects and the amount of money that might be available. Could you just highlight that again? I know that was a lot of material all at once, but kind of been piecing that together. I understand the five billion and et cetera, but obviously, this information in coming forward says, you know, with the county's help and others within our own city that we're capable and still stand a good chance of obtaining some funding. And certainly, it's outlined here as to what we're looking that funding for. But as a total projects, as you mentioned, I believe four hundred million for the county. Where, I don't know if I can ask you where specifically we might stand in, as you've indicated, our chances of obtaining some funding, because we're talking about at this point, early two thousand and fifteen, mid-two thousand and fifteen, I think you mentioned.
Well, to answer the second part of that, I guess, is I've got thirty-seven projects out there, like I said, worth four hundred million dollars. I can't say where you guys are going to fall out. Looking at the projects myself, I think you rank very highly in several of the criteria that are out there in the Restore Fund, okay? So I think you're going to do well, but the reason that we have a committee out there and the reason that we do it this way is we've done this with public input all the time. There's eight members on my Restore Act Committee that are going to grade your projects. I don't grade your projects, okay? The committee members do. So the better the city makes the presentation and shows applicability to the criteria and to the Restore Act, the better off they're going to be. And that criteria has been sent to the county, or to the city, I'm sorry, so that they have an idea of how the project is going to be graded, so they ought to be able to kind of tailor that presentation to that.
Well, and, you know, the information that we have regarding Fred Fox and over fifty projects in thirty years, I guess, obviously, you feel that, you know, first of all, the city is capable of putting this together along with the help that we would get. We basically would, you know, be in a pool just as we would going the other route.
Yes.
Would you say that's correct?
Yeah, that's correct. I personally figured out, I don't have any background in, before this, okay? Before this, I served in the military, completely unrelated to anything to do with grants and everything else. Went back to college for three years, did that number, came in, and I was able to figure out how to submit the grants and everything else for the county within a short amount of time. So I'm, I think that there's no doubt in my mind that your staff is capable of submitting these on their own. But that being said, you know, if you guys feel that you want to tailor it, and he's got the right kind of writing to do it and draw the right attention, that's, you know, that's really your debate there. But the capability to do it, yeah, it's not hard. And I've offered my services to help out with the city, and if they need my help to submit the projects.
Now, as far as money's available from BP and what has yet to still be determined, I think, as you've indicated, there have been some monies put forth. You said the county is basically guaranteed at this point, just under a million dollars. Obviously, there may be more if we're talking about one billion, and you're talking about anywhere from five to seventeen or something.
Right. We get, basically, the way it works out is we get one million dollars for every billion that's fine. BP is fine. And Transocean's already settled. That being said, that money, the pathway to get to that money yet is undefined. The Treasury rules have not, because it's all controlled under federal statutes. So the Treasury rules that guide the distribution of those funds has not been promulgated yet. The draft has come out, comments were made on the draft, and the final Treasury rules have not come out. So we don't know how to get the money yet. Nobody knows how to get to the money yet. So everybody's kind of a wait-and-see mode to see what's going on with that. And like I said, the trial's ongoing right now, so until we hit February, we won't know how much money's out there.
It's interesting, because when you go back, there's already been monies, not so much towards the cities, but, and state, et cetera, but there have been monies, I think, I'm trying to remember the name of the individual who was in charge.
The NIFW and the NRDA monies. There are monies that have come through other channels and other means, BP's, the criminal fines, for example. What we're talking about with Restore is civil, okay? The criminal fines that have come out, they've made applicability, but all that money is going to areas that were directly impacted, and this is a quote, directly impacted by the oil. So had environmental damage by the oil. So we're not going to see that money unless you can prove somehow that our fish are dying off the coast or whatever the case may be because of the oil from BP. We don't have a chance at that money.
Well, it's interesting, because some that have worked for restaurants, and I'm not taking away from them, have already received money. I know somebody that was, and basically, in submitting the paperwork, it was pretty straightforward.
Right.
And, you know, she received a check for eight thousand dollars that she didn't think was even possible, but just submitted.
And that's a different, and that, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but that's a different, that's a different type of money. It's a different funding stream. It's completely unrelated to the Restore Act.
So you would say we do have the staff feel pretty confident in being able to put this forward and still stay on a timely timeline for submitting what's necessary, as opposed to having someone else do this for a fee? And as you're suggesting, your fee is zero, is that right?
My fee is paid for by the county.
Exactly.
My fee is not zero.
Well, the difference being obvious, as you see from a percentage range and what funding would be gathered, so.
Yes. In my opinion, my opinion I'm giving to you guys is I can help you guys write this grant up, or this, it's not even a grant application. It's a submittal, a project submittal form, and I can help you guys write the project submittal form to get you guys in front of the FDP. And from there, how the Gulf Coast Consortium, which is the state group that's going to control the money, and how the federal group of money are going to select and distribute money, I don't know.
And isn't it going to cost us thirty to fifty thousand?
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I'm still not clear yet. Is the, what's the county's role in deciding projects?
The county has put together the Restore Act Committee, okay, which is the people that are going to screen it. The money from Restore Act, a portion of that fund is going to flow directly to the county. So because we're going to get-
Is that the money we're approaching right here?
That's one of the potential funding streams, yes.
One of the potential funding streams.
Yes, there's three, there's three total funding streams, state, federal, and county money.
Okay.
Okay. We're, the county gets, this Restore Act Committee, we've looked at the federal projects, we screened the federal projects and ran them through the Board of County Commissioners and sent them up for federal funding, okay? But if you guys, if you guys don't come to the county for it, I don't see you guys really getting a chance at that direct money. So that's why I've been working with your staff, because I'm supposed to go out there and find all the projects. So that's why I've come to you guys.
But you are the avenue to the three different avenues of funds, then?
No, I'm the avenue to one of the three different sections of funds.
But you would help with?
I will help you with the other two avenues.
With the other two avenues.
With the state and the federal, yes, because it's, it's not really that hard. It's a state, it's a submittal form that you go online, you fill in the blanks for Adobe, basically, and from what I've seen for the projects that you guys have had, you upload a couple pictures, scan them in, and submit it. It's not a hard process.
Yeah. The decision-making progress, now the one stream, that's the county stream.
Yes.
You, the county is within itself deciding where it wants to use that stream of money.
Correct.
It's saying, this is our pot, and we can do with it. We can choose with your committee, I'm assuming, or others, or the county commission, how to spend that money.
Yeah. The Restore Act Committee will screen and process all the projects by resolution. They will screen and process all the things and make the recommendations to the Board of County Commissioners, and the Board of County Commissioners, in the end, decides how to spend that money.
Okay, so Board of County Commissioners essentially has you folks to help them decide how to spend it.
Yes.
But ultimately, how they're going to spend it is going to be however they decide to spend it.
Sure, but up to this point, they haven't.
Not saying have, not saying have. I'm just trying to understand the process.
That's correct.
Yeah. In the course of that, what guidelines do you have, or do you have any, as to how you spend that money? In other words, does it have to be restricted to waterfront areas or can it be for a baseball field inland or lakes?
It's, the Act, the Act itself limits the projects to within the coastal management zone, which is basically the first twenty-five miles going inland or out to I-75. That's a real rough, in our county, that's a real rough idea of where the twenty-five mile point is.
Right.
So that's restricted. So-
Does it restrict-
Projects in Dade City are not included on the Restore Act.
Right, but I mean, the nature of the projects, any restrictions on those?
They have to tie into the Act itself. They have to tie into the Restore Act itself in some way, shape, or form.
But that could just simply be economic development.
It could be economic development. It could be environmental restoration. It could be land acquisition of sensitive lands, conservation lands.
It's extremely broad. I mean, the county-
It's fairly broad, yes.
Okay, yeah. So, I mean, there, from my standpoint, I see, I don't see our chance of getting a, and this is my personal opinion, a big shot at that first pot. I can just see right now the county commission having a zillion ways to spend that money, and it's not going to be on one of our projects.
I don't, the county commission is going to take the recommend, in my opinion, and the way I see it going down, the county commission is going to take the recommendations from the Restore Act. Up to this point, the first twenty-five projects that we submitted to federal, if I would have had money, they, I'm pretty sure that's how they would have spent the money, is based on those twenty-five different projects that were out there. I don't see the Board of County Commissioners coming in and trying to redirect all the funds and everything else.
And I'm not saying that. I'm just saying they've got an awful lot on their plate.
Yeah, they got, there's twenty-five other projects out there right now that have been graded and another twelve that were in the process of grading. It won't hurt you guys to come in, though. I guess the point is, to come in and present your projects, you guys are, that commitment is very small entailed to the potential payoff for it. You could potentially have the dredge done, or you could have the waterfront project done, or a combination thereof. But the money and time that you're putting into it is very small compared to the potential outcome. So I highly encourage you guys to come forward in front of the committee.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Anything else? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Any further discussion?
Well, I just think that's a-
I'll get to the public in a second.
I just think that's a big point, as Bill, his recent question in regards to basically control of funds, that it would be outlined such that from this committee, that basically, you know, there would be information, in other words, wouldn't hurt us, you know, that let's say there's X amount of money granted, and then decided on where this money's going to go, that you've indicated, you know, we wouldn't be hurt by that by taking this path, and I think that's important when we look at one versus the other. I don't know if anybody else has any comments in regards to that, but I think that's probably-
I don't quite understand what you're saying, Steve.
As Bill indicated, this would go before the Board of Commissioners, that there would be, after this application process, a suggestion on what projects would qualify essentially for payment. You can comment on this again if you want. I think you follow where I'm getting to, but I think when Bill drew the question, it was basically outlined that would not necessarily be the commissioners that would essentially decide, although that's part of the process, that would already have been drawn from the committee.
The committee, the committee is specifically tasked with reviewing and ranking all the projects.
Right.
To the Board of County Commissioners to make a recommendation on how to spend the money. That's what their task were. And you're absolutely right. You guys are out nothing. If you come in front of the, and you guys already have with the waterfront park project, you guys already came in front of the Restore Act Committee. Your staff did, okay? So all we asked you to do when we sent you back was, hey, because we knew the waterfront overlay district was there, we knew the dredgings were there, we asked you to expand that out and make a comprehensive project to make your presentation stronger. That's why we asked you guys to go back and look at it and then come back to us, so.
And the fact that, as you've indicated, we would be helped with all three areas, not just one area of funding. I'm just, you know, again, you know, in looking at the county outreach, as Terry has indicated in bringing this forward, that in our previous meeting, you know, this was not mentioned. And, you know, it's probably good that we are back here on a Saturday because we've got more information. We also have in front of us a little bit more about Fred Fox Enterprises, et cetera. But basically, what we've heard thus far has outlined that, you know, we can do this. We obviously need help. Obviously, this isn't going to hurt us in looking at our chances of funding in the outlined areas that we have.
Well, let me, let me jump in. It was my recommendation after meeting with Jocelyn and Mr. O'Neill, because of the suggestion on the part of Mr. Mariano to expand our presentation and to fortify and strengthen our position to the best that we could, I suggested that we solicit and get outside help for several practical reasons, one of which is that Ms. Martinez and Mr. O'Neill have limited time and ability to spend on putting together this information, and they welcome the assistance. And let's also look at the economic consequences if we go ahead and get an outside person who is skilled in writing this. And I appreciate, and certainly, our person would want to work hand and glove with Mr. Franklin and anybody else out there that's, because we're looking to be inclusive and to reach out and to do things that are beneficial for our residents and for our commercial districts and for the environment and everything else. But let us say, and again, scoring, scoring on these projects is going to be significant in terms of our placement, our ability to get up there and get an approval. I think we've got great projects. We've got things that just kind of almost in a perfect storm coincide with the legislation, with what's happening in the community, and the opportunities before us. I want to enhance our ability to go forward and get that money or get whatever's available for us and for the community. But let us say that the county gets one million dollars for at least the first go-around before the, we know that there's a million, approximately a million dollars out there. Well, what if we scored really high and got a hundred thousand dollars as a grant? As, what will we owe Fred Fox for his assistance to us? Three thousand dollars. To me, this is a minimum kind of expenditure upon, on the part of the city- To me, this is a minimum kind of expenditure upon, um, on the part of the city to get a really good result. Yes, we might be able to go it alone, but this isn't the only pot to fish in, okay? We've got the federal and the state and other projects. This is, um, the city was be, before its time in doing the master plan for the waterfront district. Uh, we've got a great plan out there and finally, the opportunity is coming to us for development of that waterfront project. We're prepared, as we needed to be, to have these, these plans in place. The dredging permits, what awaits dredging is money. Do we need it desperately? Yeah. Miller Bayou, uh, lots of the channels need dredging for environmental reasons. They need it for, you know, just navigation, but having said all that, the economy is gradually improving. We've got our plans in place. We have a unique opportunity to, uh, get funds. If we get nothing, Mr. Fox gets nothing. And, um, I, I, and I'm gonna ask Tom to speak to his ability and the staff's ability to, to work on this project. They've tried, they put together the original presentation, uh, with limited times, but, um, their plate is full. And, um, to me, we owe it to ourselves and to our community and to our businesses to, um, to work as hard as we can with, with the county, with Mr. Franklin, with the Restore Committee, uh, and, um, uh, get assistance that enhances our position, not only for these funds, but anything else that's out there that we don't know about that, you know, Mr. Fox could, uh, help us with. Uh, I just think it's, um, he's got, uh, he's worked for us before. Um, I, I think it was Phyllis Gray that may have, um, been instrumental in, in, um, in working and getting him to come and work for the city. I don't remember, it's a, it's been a while ago. Uh, but he's got a, um, he's a very competent person. Mr. O'Neal, um, in terms of your ability and, and the staff's ability, I know that you and Ms. Martinez have been working, um, on this. Share with us, uh, your thoughts.
Certainly. First, I, I, I wanna make sure that I convey our collective appreciation to Curtis Franklin. Uh, he's been very helpful, very supportive, uh, and we all wanna see our initiatives move forward. Speaking is to our abilities in, in the, uh, staff, uh, to accomplish a grant application or a funding application. And I feel pretty good about our collective abilities to do, uh, grant writing, uh, to do what we have done. Uh, I personally have a lot of experience with it with, uh, cooperative funding grants from SWF MUD and other grants from the state that I've worked with in the past. However, uh, we, uh, and I'm speaking primarily of Jocelyn and myself, uh, have a multitude of things that we must do, and this is one of them. And we wanna participate, and we all have a very limited amount of time that we can devote. And, um, the way that I look at this particular opportunity as, as your city manager and staff member is that we've got the opportunity to take advantage of a professional consultant, uh, on a contingency basis, a commission basis, if you will. And in the end, uh, if this initiative isn't successful, we've still got that work product to use to find or solicit other grants uh, with a very minimal, if any, investment other than staff time. You know, we would work with Mr. Fox as well. We would be, uh, very much involved in that. We've already done a considerable amount of work, uh, and we would work with him to try and get the best presentation possible. Um, but like the mayor said, uh, all of you know what we're faced with, uh, insofar as staff time. Um, we are underway with our budget preparation. Uh, we have a Restore Act, uh, presentation scheduled for June 5th, and our time is limited. Um, you know, we're, we're more than willing to spend all the time that we can and devote to it, but the help and assistance is welcome. And so, if you decide to proceed with this, uh, I would certainly would welcome it and we would devote ourselves to the greatest extent we possibly could. And, uh, uh, it would be my recommendation that you would proceed with this because I think it, it'd be, it would be different if we had a, a, a multi-thousand dollar fee that we had to pay, uh, but we don't. Uh, we only get money if we get money, or we only pay money, excuse me, if we get money. So, it's just like a situation where I don't really think we can lose. And, um, so I, I, that's what I would have to say.
I mean, I would just say that I know that, you know, look, we all know the projects. We all know that without any money, those are going nowhere. They're gonna be shelved and they're not going to happen. Um, the difference is, um, uh, uh, and again, we, we may have a couple more questions for you, it looks like. Um, um, it, it looks as though, when, when you break it down, as you've indicated, uh, with your help, with the staff's help, um, you know, we've got two different avenues here. Uh, and, and going with the Fred Fox, obviously, you're still part of that process as well.
Right.
Uh, how that differs with, uh, uh, how you would work in this capacity versus with our staff, how much time the staff would have to, uh, put in this. Obviously, this is something that, uh, you're putting a lot of time into and other folks that perhaps work with you. Um, what do you, can, can you give some thoughts on, on, on that? I thi, I think you see the decision that we're faced with.
First of all, if you guys, June 5th, uh, I'm trying to get you guys to come to the table, but if we need to change that date from June 5th to some, to another date, I can move that date back. I'm the one that does the scheduling for the, for the thing. So if you guys cannot get a, a good project done or a good product generated by then, by all means, let me know, okay? And work with me and, and we'll adjust dates and do what we can. We have time to do that, so bear that in mind. This is not a grant application. I keep trying to stress this and maybe I haven't made this clear. This is not a grant application that we're talking about. This is a project submittal. This is where you write up a description of the project that you want to do and you submit it to the state. And then later on, and, and later on down the road, when they get the money, they're gonna go back in and they're gonna look at all these projects and these project application forms. And they're gonna start selecting projects, or they're gonna start asking questions about it, whatever the case may be. Okay, so this is not a grant submittal. This is not a formal submittal for that. All you're doing is you're writing up your project that you wanna do on the, onto their form and submitting it online. Okay, so it's not, it's not that hard. That's, that's for the pot too, the state and the federal money. For the, for the local money, all you're doing is you're coming in and you're doing a project presentation. You're gonna tell the committee what your project is like, what it is, how, you know, how it applies to the Restore Act, whatever the case may be. If you guys hire Fred Fox, uh, and do this, he, the first thing he's gonna have to do is he's gonna have to come to me because I have the criteria that, you know, that, that's out there and he's gonna try to tailor it to that criteria. Well, that's something I'm already paid to do, so. And, and I'm willing to help you guys do. It's just whether you guys wanna have him come to me or whether you wanna have Jocelyn come to me. I guess that's the, that's the real decision. Or Tom, or, or whoever, come to me and talk to me and work with me. So, either way, you know, we're, we're extremely flexible. I won't say extremely flexible, but I'm, right now, I'm able to be flexible a little bit on my end.
Go ahead.
Couple of things I, all right, if, if time is a limit, we have some good resources in the community. Um, some, some of our, um, you know, uh, people that have done some things for us in the past may wanna volunteer and jump in to help. Um, I also have a question about when you work with a gentleman like Fred Fox, uh, what's the chance of something like that going out to bid because of the fact that, you know, now you have, uh, certain contingency monies, uh, percentages? How do we know that there's not another group that would do the same thing for less? Just, just pointing that out. Um, and also, one thing that, um, I discussed with, uh, Mr. Matthew, he said to me that he has some concerns about, um, how the contingency funds would be paid. Because, um, would we be able to pay out of the dollars that are awarded to us? Or does the city have to budget for, let's say we get this money? Do we have to budget upfront and have this money to pay Mr. Fox before the money comes in? Or do we pay directly from the monies?
Mr. O'Neal, can you respond to this?
I, I know of no limitations that, uh, would restrict the funding that was awarded. Uh, in other words, uh, the information that I have, if we were awarded one hundred thousand dollars, I don't know of any, uh, criteria that would eliminate our ability to pay out of the funding that we received.
But we not, you know that for sure? Ms., do you any, is there anything in the Restore Act that you, uh, there are some grant programs I, I know that require the, the governmental entity not to use those, those funds for payment of the grant writer or the, the experts they've used. Is there anything that you know of in the Restore Act that limits that?
The Restore Act, as it, it talks about, there's a limit of three percent for administrative costs for the grant. Now, because the money's coming through the county, I, I don't know how that would work if it comes through the county and then the county distributes it out to the city, whether you guys would be eligible for that three percent or not. Um, to further complicate that, the treasury rules aren't out yet and, and the formal rules of how to apply and how to spend the money are not out yet either.
Would the, would the county take the three percent as administrative fee versus us getting it?
Good.
Yeah, they could, yeah.
I, I can't answer that. I don't, I don't know how, I don't know how that's gonna work yet.
Yeah.
So, if, if there is a prohibition in the grant, which we don't know that there is and there may be the ability, uh, to, to cover administrative fees in the grant, um, if not, then, then we would have to pay Mr. Fox for, um, any success he assists us in getting.
All right, now, is it legal to take public dollars, um, for that, such a project?
Oh, yeah. I'm not sure that I heard that.
Is it legal to take public dollars to use, uh, for such a project, for contingency money?
I wouldn't see any reason why you couldn't.
I'd like to know that from Mr. Fox.
Uh, you, you know, what we're saying here is, is, uh, a couple of things. I, I, I wanna assure you that, you know, I've worked with the form, we filled it out. We didn't have any problem doing that. And then we put together the presentation, uh, Jocelyn and I, and we both spoke to the Restore Act Committee. June 5th, if we need to do that again for the three projects, we will. And, uh, I think collectively, what we're talking about is a way to enhance our ability and have a, an extension of the staff capability, uh, for minimal investment. If we get, as the mayor mentioned earlier, one hundred thousand dollars and we have to take three thousand dollars from somewhere else to get, uh, to get a hundred thousand dollars, I'd take that deal all day long. Uh, you know, if it happened to be more than that, if it was two hundred thousand and we had to pay six thousand dollars out of another fee, uh, I still would take that deal. Uh, that's just, you, you can't go wrong. I, once again, I wanna emphasize how helpful Mr. Franklin has been. And we certainly will do what we need to do. We're just talking about enhancing our ability to the greatest extent possible to where we have this work product that I think can be used not only for this, but in the future, uh, whether it be on a state or federal level or some other, uh, and this, of course, is not what you would consider a grant. It's a funding opportunity. Uh, and, uh, it, it just looks to me like the development of a work product for a very minimal investment. And if we do get paid, even if we do get paid, the money that we would spend would certainly be worth it. I mean, how could, how could we not say that receiving a hundred thousand dollars toward a, a project in the waterfront district or a hundred thousand toward dredging, if we had to pay three thousand dollars to get the hundred thousand dollars, I, I, you know?
You mentioned that you worked with Mr. Fox in the past. Have you paid contingency fees and how, if so, how have you paid?
This is the way he operates all the time. This is how the, how we've done it in the past with him.
Well, that's what I'm asking. You said you worked with, um, Mr. Fox.
I, I have not worked with him, but the city of Port Ritchie has.
Okay.
And, and I looked at several of his prior agreements with the city and they were structured the same way.
Okay, and, and we pay the contingency fees and, and whatnot from the public funds?
I don't know how it was funded.
Do you know, do you know if we paid from, directly from the, the fees that were given us by, uh, the, the bid award that was awarded? Or were we, did we take it out of our budget?
I, I, I don't know.
And I can say, I can answer, I think, one of those. And that is in one, I believe in one of the projects that Mr. Fox did, uh, for the, the city, and I don't remember if it was the parking garage or whatever. Uh, part of, his fee was structured in the grant itself, but, but every one of those is grant specific. The, the, the grants have different criteria or different, um, latitude in what you can do. Uh, and furthermore, that currently, Mr. Fox is working for the city of Zephyr Hills, Dade City.
Yeah, I read that, I read that, uh, email.
And, and his contract is the same. And he's worked with, he's currently working with cities throughout the state of Florida. I, it, you know, to me, it comes down to the issue of not whether we could do this. We could certainly submit the proposal. The, the real, right, the real crux of the issue is how do we get our best foot forward? How do we enhance the position? And I can tell you in the conversations that I've had with Ms. Martinez and Mr. O'Neal and the meetings I've had with them, that, uh, uh, expert assistance, skilled assistance would simply enhance our position now and for other projects. And I think it is a fatal mistake not to go forward and do this. Um, we are a small city with limited staff. This is an opportunity to go forward with projects that would otherwise drop by the wayside. We have spent, you know, how long have we had dredging permits out there? Ten, twelve years? We've been working on that. Where has it gone? No place. Waterfront master, uh, plan, what, that, that's fourteen, fifteen years old? We're waiting for the opportunity to move forward. Uh, and, um, again, you can be penny wise and pound foolish. The, there is no upfront cost to us to do this and the, the, uh, potential benefit is huge. Um, and again, I'm looking at our particular circumstances. The county has dedicated staff to work on the project. We don't. We're a small city with small staff. And, um, in my opinion, uh, there is no substitute for expert, um, input and assistance in doing this project or going to the state level, the federal level, or whoever is out there. If we're gonna move forward, we cannot move forward without grants. We cannot fund these projects by ourself. And if we wanna stagnate and sit still, we can try to do it as we've done it for the last ten to fourteen years and, and hope something happens. But if we want to move forward and make a contribution, then I think we have to seize the opportunity.
Mr. Franklin, if we were to hire Mr. Fox, do you think our chances of getting money would increase?
For the federal and state levels?
No.
Quite honestly. For the, for the local, I, I guess if he was able to somehow strengthen your presentation or he could bring, uh, bring that in, uh, there, there's a potential for it. Um, there are some strong projects out there on the, on the local level, okay? So, you, you guys do have some fair competition out there, but, uh, me personally, if you're asking my personal opinion, I, I think at this point, you're, you're bringing him in, you don't need to. That's my, that's my personal opinion. I, I just, I, I don't see the point of, of having somebody come in to write a grant or, or to do a grant proposal when there isn't a grant. It's a project submittal and a project presentation. Now, if he's gonna come in and strengthen your project presentation, and that's kinda.
That's exactly, that's exactly the point.
You know, that, then that may be possible. I don't know the man. I don't know the man, so I can't really say what his abilities are or whether that's going to work or not. I would say that, you know, working with the local businesses and working with everybody that's out there, that will help strengthen your proposal too.
Okay. Steve, you got something to say?
Well, you know, excuse me. And that's been the whole question. And, you know, if other council members here have something to say in regards to that, because I think we've heard basically from both sides. And again, it's critical that, as the mayor indicated, our best foot is put forward. And what we have at this point is, as this gentleman has indicated from the county, in two of those areas, it may not make a difference. However, in one of those areas, it very well could make a difference. You know, look, I've always had my faith in the staff. I have faith in both Tom and Jocelyn. You know, Jocelyn has a PhD. I'm sure she's very capable of, and this, I think, is where it comes to. Folks, I think it comes to someone that's, you know, done this for 30 years and is that putting our best foot forward? Because this funding is critical. If we don't get it, this goes absolutely nowhere. We have, again, a staff member with a PhD that's done a lot of work for us over the years she's been here. And I think she's done a good job as well. So, you know, it really comes down to what do we think we're going to get? And based on the percentage range that's outlined here of 1, 2, and 3, from those total monies, 1 billion equates to 1 million. What do we think we're going to get and base that on the percentage that the city basically would keep for the work done from the staff, which we've heard from Tom, is minimal time. I don't know how minimal time would be identified. But I still think, again, you know, this is what makes this decision so hard to make, is that, you know, when we've put faith in the staff to have something of these presentations done, we've had success as well. So again, you know, we're still open for comment here. There's a big decision to make. And again, these won't go forward without our best foot forward. So, you know, I feel bad that our best foot forward wouldn't include our staff because they've always been generally a good first step forward. Anyway, that's my thoughts.
Yeah, Tom, just a quick question, your understanding of the proposal in front of us, is that Mr. Fox is basically restricting his activities to these three projects and to the Restore Act. Is that...
Yes, but...
So he's not out looking for other sources besides the Restore Act to fund these projects?
That's correct.
That is correct. Any work product that is a result of what he's doing becomes ours?
Yes. What, and bear in mind, to follow up on your comment, this isn't, I'm not envisioning a situation where we hand the ball off to Fred Fox. You know, I'm envisioning a situation, if you see fit to approve this, where we work together and we work together to develop a presentation, to enhance that presentation to the greatest extent possible. My involvement, Jocelyn's involvement, will be critical to Mr. Fox. He, I don't understand how he could do something like this without our significant involvement because we've had a lot of background, particularly in the waterfront part. Our background in the dredging project is minimal. And our background in the master planning for the waterfront district is minimal as well, although we do have the work product. What we are going to develop with Mr. Fox's assistance, if you approve of this, is a work product. And that work product will be the city's. And so that'll be something that can be used over again. It is totally true. I've had conversations with Mr. Franklin on this. The actual application to this is something that is pretty easy to put forward. But I'm envisioning, you know, help in the actual physical presentation that would go in front of the Restore Act Committee. And like I said, I've never worked with Mr. Fox before. I had the opportunity to meet with him. If it doesn't work, it doesn't work.
Well, and again, you know, my other question, my third question is, going along with what you had said before, the methodology that'll be used by the, you know, the other two pots, as it were, the state and the federal. They're going off of just basically online submittals and that's it? I mean, they're going to make their decisions based on that?
I don't necessarily know that they're going to make their decisions based on that. They may go through and... The way that I would envision it and the way that we've been trying to push them to do it is a regional approach where they split all the projects out to the local regions for the state funds. And then the regions come together. So for us, it would be Tampa and Pinellas and Hillsboro and either Manatee or Hernando, depending which way we went with it. And those four counties or five counties would get together and they would look through those projects and select the top 10 projects through some sort of criteria and then make the recommendation and find the details out on those projects. You're absolutely right. Some of these projects are nothing more than overviews of an idea or a statement idea that's going on. Some of them are further along the project in planning. So they're going to have to go back and they're going to have to look at the projects a little bit closer later on down the line when they go to make that selection. But they haven't bothered to do that yet and they aren't going to do that for at least another year. I don't see it happening. Well, let's say they're not going to do that probably until February, March, when they have some money to operate. The federal level and the state level, I don't think that they're going to put any cause or concern on Pasco County's ranking system and criteria when I send them up to the state or the federal level. They're going to look at how well the project is put together. And they're going to look at how applicable and what their priorities are. And that could be driven politically as well, you know, there are political ramifications.
Well, sure. And that's the other question I was going to get back to my city manager with. And again, you know, are we talking strictly grant proposal from Mr. Fox? Or are we talking any sort of, shall I say, lobbying sort of presence?
Well, I would imagine that...
In other words, he has connections that we don't. Or he knows how to present himself better in a state.
He's been at it for 30 years.
I'm hearing that, yeah. I'm wondering if that's what we can expect from that.
I think he's the longest tenured grant writer in the state of Florida.
Right, right. So that's my other question at that. You know, are we getting some of that service along with this too? That when whatever we do finally shows up, up at the state level, ours will, you know, that's why people hire lobbyists, you know, is to get their project in front of people's nose. And can he provide that kind of service or does he even do that?
I think that all, we're going far afield. You know, the issue to me is simple and straightforward on this proposal. Would it assist us in this particular area after, going after restore fund, funding, to have Mr. Fox? And I can only tell you that while our staff is competent and dedicated, they're overwhelmed with what they've got to do. And I think you have to ask yourself the question, what downside is it for us? What is the downside? The downside is we have to pay him some money if we get the funds. The question, the next question is, is that a reasonable bargain that we want to enter into? Given the compensation? And let me move on and open it to the public.
Yep.
And then we'll come back. Thank you. All right. Anybody for the public wishing to speak? Eric?
Thank you. Good morning. Eric Soynen, 5419 Treadway. I just want to say from a business standpoint and just an opinion here, I'd go with the track record. I mean, I agree 100% with what the mayor's saying, what Tom is saying. I think we've got plenty to do around here. I mean, there's a lot of things and just in my business, if I, you know, we have people who do their day to day and if we can outsource something, we're going to outsource it. And I think, honestly, I think it's a no brainer. And I think regardless, I think Curtis is going to help get this money because, and I think even if the county gets this money, money's going to be funneled to the waterfront. We've got a great plan, but it makes sense. The county wants to bring jobs. And it's all about quality of life and eco-tourism. Pinellas, every year, record breaking years for tourism. Now, if we, and there's a big push for this tourism. So I really believe it makes a lot of sense for the county to funnel money into this waterfront. So I think either way, it's going to happen. So just from my point of view, it's a no brainer. I mean, go with the track record and we'll get the money. Thank you.
Mr. Priest?
Jim Priest, 5100 Sunset Boulevard. I got to just echo, you know, Mr. Soynen's comments in here from a business standpoint. It just doesn't make a lot of sense not to. I don't see how you can not follow down this road. One of the members mentioned to me the other night in here that we've been trying and trying and trying and we haven't been successful, okay? You know, in funding these projects in here. And that tells you something, okay? Tells you, you know, the effort, it's not for a lack of effort, not for a lack of want, okay? It's just we haven't met the criteria, okay? We haven't met the capability, okay? That these entities that are providing these funds, okay? You know, want us to succeed at, okay? And how you cannot work at trying to better yourself in a way that takes nothing out of your pocket today and only, you know, expend dollars upon a success. You know, to me, there's tons and tons and tons of logic of there to take the transaction. I don't, again, see how you can in there. There's an old adage about, you know, continuing to do the same thing over and over and over expecting a different result, okay? You know, it's not a good thing, you know. You've got to do something different, okay? You've got to put your best foot forward. We've said that time and time again. These projects are critical, okay? Not only for the city in there but for the commercial entities, okay? That have put their, you know, blood, sweat, tears, and hard earned dollars into their successes out there. How can you sit up there as a council and not try to help these people? It just, it makes no sense. It physically makes no sense to me. You know, and these folks are spending their money, they're gambling with their lives, with their livelihoods, with their families in here. And you have an opportunity now to make a big, major difference in the success of these applications. And to not take that, I don't know how you look yourself in the mirror. I really don't. It just doesn't physically make sense to me. Mr. Fox is, you know, abundantly qualified. I don't think anybody can, you know, can argue that. Mr. Franklin obviously is majorly qualified to help us out moving down the road. With Mr. Fox, you've got an individual that has virtually been successful not applied for, but it virtually has been successful in hundreds of projects, hundreds, okay? It, you know, again, guys in here, it's about us putting our best foot. I can only, you know, beg upon the council's, you know, good sense, okay, to move forward with this.
Anyone else?
Yes, ma'am.
Hi there. I just wanted to remind you all, maybe it's something that you're really not thinking of, is what is the criteria that you need to have to put forth before the Restore Act? And the criteria is based on tourism, job creation, education, economic development. And what we have to do is restore what was lost from when the oil spill occurred. We have to restore water quality, continue to make water quality focus. The waterfront park project itself, as it is, just the park, really doesn't do that. You know, the public fund, the public trust, when they gave the city the land and everything, yeah, it just seemed like just a natural park, just wild and natural and very beautiful. But now that it's a park, you know, it's not even really utilized the way other parks and other waterfront communities are utilized, by having like concerts and having like concession stands on them and things like that. The community wants to be involved in things that you do, okay? For the longest time, there's been a lot of, you know, does the community really care about what the council does? Does the council really care about what the community does? I mean, I think that what we're seeing now is that you're seeing it's more trending toward the younger people caring more about the community and the waterfront and the boating and the things that are important to the waterfront. I mean, it is a port, Port Ritchie. So that's basically that. And then as far as me being on the Restore Act Committee, the project that you submit has to show all those things and basically you have to prove how the people in the community are going to be able to utilize the waterfront park for a very long period of time other than for it just being a park.
Thank you. Anyone else before I close it? Yes. Good? Okay. All right. I'm going to close it to the public, bring it back here. Any further comments or discussion before we address this issue?
Yeah, I, first of all, thank everybody for coming on a Saturday morning. This is an important issue for me personally and thank you, sir, for coming. You've given us a lot of information. And it seems incoming as he's outlined. Maybe there is one phase of the three where there could be a difference made. And at least that's what I gathered from what was noted. The other thing I'm hearing, at least from the mayor and the city manager, is that the best foot forward would be with the expert. While I agree there is a chance for an expenditure of funds there based on the percentage range outlined and what we have in front of us, coming from our own city manager, it doesn't seem as though from a staff time standpoint in using the resources that are available, that that would be our best foot forward. So, you know, we're back to the expert, you know, as we were the previous meeting. Just the fact that we have more information in going forward. You know, again, this is critical for dollars coming forward to the city and without it, you know, they're going to be shelved and go nowhere. Waterfront park won't change. Nothing will change. So I just come back to you folks and this is the way I look at it. I would like to believe that we have the experts. Again, we have a PhD here who's done a lot of work. I think she's more than capable of working together with the county staff and moving this forward. But again, again, as he's indicated, even just one of those components of the three, there's agreement that an outside resource would be helpful, so.
Well, yes. Bill, you got anything?
No.
Okay. Nancy?
I, I'm going to go back to where we started the other night because there was a deadline that we had to meet. We were under a lot of pressure. Well, now we find out there's not really that deadline. All we have to do is submit a form. We do have great staff. And we have someone that I believe, if I remember right, was hired to do the things along the grant lines and analyzing things. I think they called her an analyst at the time. If I was city manager, I would free that person up to make sure that she had all the time she needed because of the enormous possibility of this process coming forward with money. Now, we can go to an outside outfit. And I'm looking at all these projects and they're well over $1 million each. So if we get monies from these, we stand to lose up to 6% of it. And the more money we get, the more we lose. We've got a lot of dredging to do. We've had estimates well over 6 million, which is what we have here. So I would say if we just got the dredging alone, which would be great, we're going to need... need every penny of it. I can understand trying to pad the basket and make sure that we have all the chances necessary to try to get this money. But in the end, uh, I think now that we have more time, we're not under the gun as we thought we were. I think the way to be transparent about this would be to go out to bid for a grant rider if we were gonna do it at all. But I think the county has made it perfectly clear, I don't think we need that. Not at this point, anyway. I think it's just overkill and I think it's a waste of, uh, money that we could put into the projects that, uh, if and when we get awarded. And then I take Nancy's point, I don't know. Mr. Public isn't here. I don't know what the legalities of any problems with this might be either, but I think right now, we, we basically need to file a form, do some basics, and then we can move on down the line.
All right. Finally, let me wrap this up. Uh, it is, uh, as Mr. Rowe indicated, it is not correct that we're gonna lose six percent of the monies if Mr. Fox assists us with this project. Because the proposal that he forwarded to us is three percent of the first five hundred thousand, two percent of the second five hundred thousand, one percent. So after that, after, you know, so if we get a, a million dol, we get two million dollars, the second million costs us one percent of that million dollars. It's a small, a small, um-
Well, it's a declining scale.
It's a declining scale. It's not cumulative. It's not six percent. It is a maximum of three percent or, and, with declining. And again, I suggest to you that what this city needs and what we've had in the past in, in constructing some of these projects is, is vision. We need not just to sit here and hope something good comes our way. Again, it's not a matter of talent of Ms. Martinez, uh, and because she has the education and the ability to do this, it's a matter of time. We don't have a big staff. We don't have a department to work on these projects. We don't have a department to look at, um, other possibilities. And Ms. Tonkin, quite frankly, made my case for me because the presentation on the waterfront park as a project, good in, in and of itself, is not really the project that meets precisely the criteria of the Restore Act. What you need to do is consolidate what, the good things we have out there and demonstrate how it does fit into the act, how it fits into the rest, uh, the revitalization of the coastal areas. And, and quite frankly, um, Mr. O'Neil and I have looked into the issues of, uh, whether this needed to go out to bid. It does not. It, on two provisions, the statute, the Florida statute's two eighty-seven, uh, applies to engineers, landscape architects, and, uh, um, architects and surveyors. And so competitive bidding isn't required under two eighty-seven. Our, our provisions allow us to, uh, go out if we believe it's in the best interest under our ordinances, to go ahead and hire someone to assist us. And simply, I think, uh, we're making a big mistake as a city not to go after aggressively to do the projects that are gonna better this community. And so I urge all of you to take that into consideration and, um, support, uh, the retention of someone who can do nothing but assist us, um, and, um, moving forward. All right. Having said that, uh, we've got, um, the issue of Mr., um, the hiring Mr. Fox to assist us, um, do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nays?
Nay.
Thank you. Thank you for coming, thank, uh, especially Mr. Franklin. Thank you for helping us understand this, um, in a better fashion and understanding that we, we as a city council, as a city, um, believe we have some great projects, believe we've got, we may be one of the focal points of, of driving some really good things in this community. And I want us to move forward and do whatever we can in conjunction that, with anybody that wants to work with us. So, um, I appreciate your time, all of you, in coming out. Okay. If there are additional comments, fine, I'll, I'll entertain those before we adjourn.
It's, it's unrelated, but, uh, I wondered if we could get on the agenda to discuss maybe a public-private partnership for that five acres for parking?
Okay.
That's it.
Okay. Thank you. Next meeting? Eric, next meeting? Okay, okay. All right, very good.
Fifty-fifty.
All right, thank you for your time and effort, and, uh, the meeting is adjourned.